Mr. Carney, Mr. Carney.
Yes.
Yes. I also want to just announce and congratulate Mary Jo Hagan, who has been chosen as a scope honoree for her service to the community. Last two things to let everybody know. Deborah Muley is the new Nassau County legislator. Came to visit us yesterday. She toured a bunch of our buildings with me because it was my opportunity to show off and brag, and I'll take that opportunity anytime. And so she was really excited about our redesigned learning spaces. She was really impressed with our students and very excited to see the kind of instruction that's going on in our school. So that was a nice treat, I think, for her, but for me as well. And the last thing I just want to share with the board and the community is Mr. Mignella and I participated in a workforce 2025 conference, but I'll put that in quotes because it wasn't really so much a conference as it was a gathering. At that gathering, we had all of the top people from SUNY. We had CEOs and business partners from across the state. There were lots of folks from different SUNY colleges, cultural institutions from across the state, and nonprofit businesses. Brookhaven National Lab was represented. The Science Museum was represented. And it was an opportunity to really think through, what are the types of skills that our students are being asked to have when they enter that workforce? And what are the partnerships that can be built with K-12, higher ed, and non to make those opportunities available for our students? And I think that Mr. Mignella and I made some good connections up there and are pursuing some of those for the next couple of years. So it was a good opportunity. Sort of on that 2020 skills, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mignella to set the context. Over the last three years, we have worked really hard on the administrative side and the technical side to upgrade our infrastructure, to make our network stable, to do all of that. And that work has been done through Google Suite. And that was one of the services that we brought in. We did that because the expense was less and the reimbursement for those services were high. So they have come in, they have done that. They continue to support us in the background. In addition, though, we have been really rolling out, yes, you get to, it's a hands-on experience.
Oh, yes. It's going to be fun for everybody.
But we have really been working with our students and our teachers at the use of instructional technology and how technology helps and facilitates the learning process. So Mr. Fatchalanga, who is our director of instructional technology, Mr. Mignella, who supervises him, are going to demonstrate some. And folks in the audience, if you can type with your phone really quickly, you can have that opportunity also.
Thank you so much for your participation. Thank you for allowing us to present tonight. It's great to see so many members of the community here who use instructional technology tools. No. It'd be great pleasure to also introduce my colleague, Darren. Will come in for a second. Darren Fatchalanga, who's our director of instructional technology. Without him, much of what we're going to show you tonight would not be successful. He's very involved in the schools, in classrooms. And we're lucky to also work with another gentleman, Ed Murray, who's a net tech specialist that's also helping facilitate a lot of the professional problem with our teachers. So the focus of our presentation tonight is instructional software. Really evolved, and we're going to see a couple of pieces that our teachers use on a regular basis this evening. So the first is some software subscriptions that we have that teachers use in the classroom. Students actually have access at home. A lot of these are web-based software subscriptions. Some that you might know, if your child is using them at home, hopefully they are. For instance, iReady. I'll pay the five students who use that. It's a math diagnostic, but also provides tailored lessons for students to work on at home. So it's instructional support, allows teachers to differentiate lessons, as well as monitor growth, identify gap areas. Another popular one that is being used quite often is Raz Kids. Raz Kids is a literacy program. It's basically digital books, but there's comprehension questions at the conclusion to help monitor growth. All these programs give the teachers tremendous amount of feedback. They get a dashboard of information that will allow them to go back to see that student and tailor instruction to meet their gaps. iExcel is one that's used in secondary level. It's a math program. We created a summer program using iExcel this past summer. Again, an adaptive program to meet the students' needs. And these are just many of them. Office 365 is just all the Microsoft Office tools. So Excel, PowerPoint, the web mail. Google Suite, we'll see some of that action today. That's a tremendous number of tools in Google Education for our teachers and students. This smart notebook is the software to make all these interactive boards actually work. This is just some of the programs that are most frequently used currently based on our usage reports. This is where our simple fun begins. So our teachers use some free tools. These actually, well, some of them are paid, but a lot of them are free. Some of them are extensions to pay to get deeper analysis. But we'll go through some of the activities that a teacher might use with their students. So the first is something called clicker cards. So we have here, and the names are in the back. Does anyone in the audience want to play with us? We're trying to go through this. Do I start? Yes. Does anybody else want to try? You want to try? So this is a great program because this will eliminate any type of excuse for a student who doesn't want to take out their cellphone and use their own device or they don't have a computer available because they use a card. And this information is given directly back to the teacher immediately. So as you look at your card, just please note that there are little letters around them. You'll notice an A, a B, a C, and a D. That's for like a multiple choice question. So you're going to hold, if you think the answer is A, you hold the A up. If you think the answer is B, you hold the B up, okay? So let's see how this works. So here is the first question. Can everyone see it? So I was the teacher of the class. And by the way, we just picked some regular type, general, tribute pursuit type of questions. And the teacher can use their own device, so I'm going to use my phone. So take a second, read that question. And when you think of the right answer, just hold it up. So I take my phone and I just basically scan.
What's happening here on the screen, you can see it as he ended scanning around the room. It's marking off the students as they're, he's going around. He sees on his phone that they're being recorded. So he can see that which ones are being picked up, which ones aren't. So you see the checks.
I was going to say, I did not authorize our names up there.
Oh. Well, it did for a reason. So you just, right now, we see who participated and who is not participating. What's nice about this, you know, one of the things we're constantly telling the teachers about getting every student actively involved. They need to be active, full participants. We don't want students to dare. So typically what happens sometimes, the teacher, I ask a question, and I get one response. Dr. Kami, her big push group, her professional involvement is always, we don't want, it's a ping pong effect, student to teacher, back to the teacher. We want to get everyone involved and engage in conversations. So this is one way that we can start to get everyone involved, to get everyone involved in conversations. So I'm missing guest three. Someone didn't participate. So once I have that information in my phone, I just let it know that it's got it all. And I go to the graph. And I can see how many people selected A, how many people selected B, et cetera. So I get instant information about how the class is progressing through the lesson. I do this at the beginning of the lesson, the middle of the lesson, and the end of the lesson. And then we can reveal the correct answer. So let's see. So the correct answer was actually A. So those who selected B unfortunately wrong. But notice, no one knows in the class who picked B. Only you know. So there is privacy there, there's no embarrassment. So you don't have to be scared to actually participate because the names are hidden. I see the names on my phone, so I know who might have selected wrong. So now this gives you an opportunity to go back and ask some questions because I know there's a misconception here right now. And I can go back and reteach quickly. And I could call on students, and I could make sure that those four students that got it wrong, I could get back to make sure that they do have a good understanding, okay?
And you could also look at the data on the backend and plan his future lessons or set up groupings based on the data that's there.
Any grade.
So.
Absolutely, something.
You know, the thing I like about this is that, you know, like if you're my kid and you lose your phone, and I send you to school with your phone, you can't use the hoop because you can do this.
Correct.
Like you don't, you just don't have a phone at all.
Correct. So let's try one more, try one more. Is this a good one? I threw, I threw a bunch of questions. Oh, you had the other question already in your mind? Okay, these are some basic, cheerio type pursuit questions that you have. All right, when you're ready, pull them up. Sure, we can definitely read it out. You ready? What is the only, one is the only man-made object that is observed from the moon? A, the Roman Colosseum. B, the Great Wall of China. C, Mount Rushmore. And D, the Great Pyramid of Giza.
And you notice as you scan the room, it's pretty forgiving. You don't have to be really on top of somebody. You could use this in the audience of a lot of people and actually with bigger cards and it works really well.
See? So that. And, let's see, is that right? Congratulations, great job. Okay.
But I just want to interrupt. So instructionally, you can see the difference in the class from this question to the last question, right? So if you're a teacher, you know that the class has mastered this and you can move on. The other one, you knew that there were four kids who didn't know the answer to that question, and you might pull them over in a separate group. Obviously, the questions here that are being asked are simple, or maybe not simple, but there's a right answer and a wrong answer. But we're using these across the district right now. And you can also, you can use it with cards, but you can also have the clicker app on your phone. So kids are using it on their phone as well. All right, hang on a second, Mr. Mignella.
I'm sorry, I was just loading the next activity.
So just to clarify, if I could, when this lesson is taking place in the classroom, the kids have their phones out and they put this on their phones or they're on the laptops?
The teacher needs their device, many devices as it can. The kids have the cards. This is what, exactly what any of you is what the kid has. And what's really wonderful about this is each card, you'll notice, has a number on it. So when I set my class up, eighteen, I know will always be Anthony because I have my roster. So every kid has a card. So if you happen to lose your card, and you're like, I forgot my card, not a problem because I have some extras. So I can go grab an extra eighteen, and say, here you go. Because I know from my roster exactly whose card you have. And there's a way to create these guest cards also, as I did. So a teacher has actually guest cards on hand, they want the two. But really, what I've seen is teachers know exactly who is assigned each one because it's right there on your phone. And I easily skip melodies to that card. Again, the key, though, is we don't want them to just speak through a drill and see, okay, I got five kids, got number one wrong, and just move on. It's now an opportunity to get instant feedback and correct that misconception on the spot and not wait until a homework assignment comes in next day or doesn't come in the next day, okay? The next activity is called Kahoot. Many of you might have heard this before. You might have seen your child playing on it. If you, audience members, if you want to participate in it, use your cellphone. Go to kahoot.it, and you can play along with us. And for the presentation, on your computers or tablets, or your iPad, you can just go to it. So with this particular game, you do need a device. And I'm going to start the game. We can do T mode or classic mode. T mode means kids are in groups and they're collaborating and they're working together. And one person enters and answers. Classic mode is everyone's playing for themselves. So once again, I get instant feedback as a teacher, but I'll do classic code. And you're going to have to enter this pin. So here's a pin. You enter the pin in where it says, enter the pin. So anyone in the audience? Two, three, eight.
Five, seven, eight, five.
Five, seven, eight, five. K, A, H. Oh, sorry. So we see who's jumping in. So the teachers see who's participating, who's not participating.
And somebody, somebody jumped on an inappropriate name. The teacher can, the teacher can. So if someone put a name that wasn't appropriate, the teacher can put their name in, and they'll have to log back in if they're real.
So I mean, it's all right, it was like, coolest, oh.
How do I change my name?
So we just go in, I'm going to like, I can just click on that, and then that person will not be allowed in, so. Think we're ready to go?
Hold on. Mr. Reeve is not. Mr. Reeve is not in.
You're G-men.
G-men.
I like that. Giants and bruders.
Uh, cools?
Cools.
No, it's cools.
One's off of the network.
Okay. All right. All right, so we're going to start the game. And we know what begins tomorrow.
It's the Olympics.
So I've did a little bit of Olympics. There's a thirty second, as a teacher, I can control how much time is allowed per question. So I do thirty seconds. You have thirty seconds to answer the question. You'll see the little symbols on your device, whether it's your cellphone or the computer. You just click on it. I know I have three answers, four, six, seven. Well, not yet. We're going quick.
Oh, we know this has a T.
No, no, individual, try it out. So as soon as that thirty seconds expires, we get instant feedback. So we know, and once again, as a teacher, I can now, if I have to, I can reteach, right? Or I move on. All right, again, you get that dashboard, it's the feedback. Let's do another question. Oh, so we got the highest points, very nice. This is calculated based on how quickly we mentioned. All right, let's try it out.
So you get it for answering the fastest, you know?
Uh, yes, it's combination. Speed is involved.
Okay, but if I was sitting here in the classroom, what would you do?
Well, hopefully, the policeman would be in a different spot.
Oh, okay.
It's a learning game. So what the research sometimes shows is the students, because they hate, they love this game. Because it makes the learning a game.
Competition.
Competition. Okay, and you want to do one more? Or should we move on to another one?
You guys lost? My network is, well, so I might have delayed this.
That's what it said.
This one is actually, you know, directly in the middle. So as a teacher, you know, you're going to have a exceptional more easily, right? So as to who, we'll move on to another one. Well, there's a couple. There's Quizlet, and then there's Quizlet Live. And Quizlet's very similar. You get questions. You guys like Quizlet? Members of the audience, you can log in also to Quizlet. You could assign like a password, so only some students can enter in. But this is a very simple one. Again, if you gain, once you log in, so once you use that URL again, you'll come right to this page. You can do a learning game, you can do a matching game, you can put vocabulary in there, you can do a writing, flashcards, all sorts of different activities. So I'll just click on learn. And you'll get your series of questions. So what I put here was just a math flutie drill, which actually, believe it or not, is what elementary students have to do. Math flutie is very important. How fast can they add, subtract, divide? And I can let the elementary teachers talk about that more, but this is something that elementary students have to do. Math flutie, multiplication tables, have to have that kind of known right away, addition to track and division. And you go. Time is your own.
So are we just going at our own pace here?
Yes. You're going to go at your own pace of this one, and then I get a little dashboard, and I can see what's going on. John? As you're working, you're going to get the next one, right? Uh, Padlet.
But many teachers have done, use Quizlet for. They'll assign students review work to do at home. And then they, when they come in the morning, they can tell which kids are struggling with certain concepts. They'll group those kids accordingly, come up with instructional strategies for those students. And then they also, what they'll do is they'll have all the activities for students to work on stuff that more advanced work, so they can work on the students that might need some extra help. So it's a way to differentiate and group the students according to their real independent needs.
Is this currently being used?
Yeah, I would, I would, teachers are using it at the high school and the middle school. I see a lot of teachers. And some elementary school teachers are using it as well. It's really a wonderful place.
So our strategy is to have lots of things in lots of places because different people learn differently.
And then there's another feature that's called Quizlet Live, which actually puts, gets everyone in groups randomly. So when you do the live version, you have to find your partner, and then together as a partner, you play the activity, and you collaborate and work through it, then you submit. And everyone has to submit on their own device, so everyone's involved. And if one person happens to submit incorrectly, it kind of takes you back, like the beginning. So you have to rethink it to make sure everyone actually has a firm understanding of that concept. So we're going to now go to Padlet, so you can find your Padlet tab. Members of the audience, if you go, does anyone want to do, except for you, the URL link? But this one is some, an activity, this is great because it's basically taking a canvas and letting everyone brainstorm and work with their partner, enter and put information down. There's a couple of different templates for Padlet. I just selected a general one. And think of it as a student writing down a little information on a post-it and sticking the post-it on the wall, right? And then the teacher could sort the post-its, or the kids could sort the post-its. But I invited members of the audience to answer this particular question, which is kind of what Dr. Kami referenced, that we went to, that a gathering to discuss those 21st century skills, those professional skills that students need to have to the workforce. So we actually engaged in activities, sometimes with our administrative team. They come up with a profile to graduate, what skills do they need? So we can make sure we're embedding those, right? Because it's not just about the arithmetic or the literacy, the reading. It's also about collaboration, critical thinking, innovation. So I gave some answers away, but if, you guys can jump right in.
What do you have to press to get it to allow, allow you to start?
Someone put anonymous, critical thinking. You just click on the screen, and you should be able to, you can put your name on there. There is a password, all these programs. The teachers are regulated by having passwords. So I'm only going to give this class passwords for this particular program versus others. Yep, now you just type. You just type it in. So it's a great way to brainstorm. As the teacher, I can move things around. You can have a student come up. You can have a student move things around, so you can engage in like a sword activity. So if I find similar topics, you know, you take this and, you know, I'll work at the, you know, strong skills. And you can just move things around. Teacher could, you know, like it.
And so you can put text, like students put pictures in, they can put links to things. So it's not just about putting text up there. And then you see some people starting to like other people's posts. So it's a way to affirm another student's response to something. You could have, they hit the like button.
And again, you can put students in groups to do this, right? So they're collaborating together, they can put their names there. And then you could share this page to, you know, email, so students have that part of the notes.
So what I said, that some of you have noticed that you don't see anything on the screen until you put an answer. And the reason for that is, you know, constructionally, you want to have the students to have some original thought. You saw it before they start looking at other people's work. It's just a, it's a way to get original thought. So you didn't see anything on your screen until after you put a response. And then after you put a response, then you saw all the other stuff show up. And that's by design. And then you could actually turn it off if you want.
Yeah, there's a moderator feature, so the teacher will have to approve it before it's actually seen by everyone, which is great because, you know, you want to make sure that they're writing something appropriate also. So you can form a teacher. So, you know, the teacher can control what is posted, what is put up, what is not put up as well. And there's different templates. So this is just one version. There's all sorts of different brainstorm activities that you can do on Padlet. This is another free program. There's an enhanced paid version, but you really don't need it because it has so many wonderful programs. You can insert pictures if you want to. So you could go on, you know, you could expand your post, you could find pictures, you can embed pictures, you can embed video. The student can do a voice text also. So it's another wonderful program for collaboration. And we're going to go to another amazing tool. Oh, thank you. Oh, you know, I wanted to show you here. Minimize this for a second, so Darren can explain this part. Because those who have a cellphone, this would be very easy for you to. Trying to get back to the other panel. Want to talk about QR codes here?
Oh, yeah. So what we're going to show up now is one of the big initiatives we've been doing for the last almost two years is to start integrating and using the Google Suite tools. It's a free, it's a free solution for schools. And the teachers in our district are really, really getting very serious by using the Google Classroom from kindergarten all the way to high school level. This thing over here, we just, is a QR code. That's an, that's an easy way for, for teachers to create pages and have devices, like at the high school level, middle school level, with phones. You can bring up a QR code reader and scan that. It'll go to that page with information. It's a way for students to disseminate information, to look up information, have to type along URL in, sets with a QR code that Andy's referring to there.
So if you want to participate in the next activity, if you want to just scan that code, that QR code, it'll take you to the form that we're about to show you.
And that's just, you need a QR code reader on your phone to do that. Anyone will work.
Or you can enter that link right there.
So what you're looking at here is just an example of one of the, one part of the whole Google Suite tools. This is a Google form. And many of our teachers are using the Google forms to actually give tests that give them immediate responses, immediate grading back to the teachers so they can, again, use that data instantly for instructions. So it's a formative assessment. And so this is an example of using a Google form, which typically, we've all seen Google forms. We get them in an email, you click on it, you answer some questions, you hit submit. Well, now you can use it as an assessment tool. And since all of our, many of our teachers are starting to use Google Classroom, which is basically like a, a, a place for teachers to post work and for students to respond to homework. And for students to respond to homework, and to collect and aggregate that information. Um, it makes it real easy because the students are already logged in. So all I have to do is go to this link in the Google Classroom, they, they go through the activity, they hit submit. And then the data goes right to the teacher. Teacher knows exactly, again, what, what, who they need to work with on what specific skills, what subskills they need help with.
So imagine the power of a Google form. I give you a homework assignment, this could be multiple choice, work and short response, short response. I don't give you a worksheet, I can just give you that QR code, you scan, you save it, go to your Google Classroom on your phone. That next day, the teacher, I will automatically know what you got wrong, who got what wrong, what I need to review quickly. So do you remember the day when you were in school and you'd go in, the first thing the teacher'd say is what? Take out your work? Take out your homework. Uh, Dr. Gallo put up questions, one to five, Dr. Jacob, what, made you get up? And I walk around the room and waste five minutes of valuable instruction, because now I'm checking homework and going over homework. I don't really know who got what wrong, I'm just gonna go over almost every single problem, because that's my assumption. Now, this is gonna allow us to know exactly who got what wrong, because your, your class comes in the next day. You can tell your instruction, your hook, your beginning, uh, quickly, the evolving, whatever that homework misconception was, review it. Make sure everyone's on task, and, you know, you get going right away, so.
This is a, a simple example of, of like the text responses and portals and that. But you can make it in such a way that the students are writing, you know, essay for one grade those, obviously. Um, you could also have the students put up a drawing or a picture of something to explain their thoughts. So again, we, we don't want tests to just be multiple choice, true or false, right? Because that's, that's not, that's not a sound assessment, you wanna have different variety of assessments. So this allows teachers to do other things other than true and false, other than multiple choice. So it's just another way to, to collect that data, and to look at that data, analyze that data, and then to act on that data as a, as an instructional tool.
So I, I think it's also, this is just one part of Google.
One small part.
One small part. What, where the emphasis really is, is not on multiple choice quizzes. I'll give you an example of one of the ways that, that we're using it. So in, in, um, in Google Classroom, you can actually do collaborative writing. And I'll give you an example of one that, that I did, but this is stuff that our kids are doing. So Mr. Gray and I are working on an article that we're writing about the award that Plaza got and, and Team Market. And so, you know, he went on, he did some of the writing, I went on, I edited that, but we're really working from one document. And, and so our kids are doing that also. So if Mrs. Deresca and I were in class together, and it was our job to write a collaborative paper together. Then we can have access to the same document, it tracks all the changes. Um, and you don't have to save it, email it, edit it, save it, email it. And then we both made changes and emailed it at the same time, but nobody knows which is the latest version. This is a document that sits virtually out there and tracks the changes that people are making, so that you can work on one document together. Um, Russ Randazzo, who's in the bathroom, he's always. Russ has been using G Suite and, and Office 365 to do a lot of that collaborative work as well. So, so the work that is happening, that we're doing, is the same kind of stuff our kids are doing in class. Um, and it's not about multiple choice quizzes, it's about collaboration and conversation, and actually, um, doing work that has a productive, um, meaning to it, and, and that's just one example.
The only reason why I pick multiple choice is because when you're done with the assessment, you'll get instant feedback right now. Whereas the short response, the teacher will grade, so I just wanted to show the instant feedback for the, um, you guys as well. Plus, I didn't want to take anything home tonight, do we?
Uh, you know, another good example is, and just this, this next week, we have two elementary schools, the, the same school that Candy was referring to. They're taking one of the, one of their writing works between one elementary school and another, and they're actually connected using Google, a Google Hangout. And the kids are gonna be talking to each other about the work that they're doing, and the writing that they're doing. They're gonna be using Google, the Google Docs, to actually co-author documents from two different schools in the district. And they're gonna use Google Hangouts to have conversations around them. Um, Andy and I and Ed actually made this presentation from three different locations, we didn't see each other the last two weeks. We did this all virtually online, and just collaborated all online. That's the same skills that we're, that we're trying to develop in, in our, in our kids, to give them those skills. To be productive and successful.
This is Google Slides, so it's another one of those features.
Yeah, I use, I've used Google Slides, and I'm typing something in, and the person who's responsible for the images saw what I was typing.
You drop it right away, you see it right away.
And it popped up, and I was like.
And we'll show you one more, there's many more, we just picked some of the, uh, most popular ones our teachers are using right now, the ones that, you know, have been rolled back to our professional development.
Yeah, just, just take a step back, what Andy and I and Ed, who goes out to schools and does a lot of professional development, we're, we're, we're coming up, think of it as like a, you know, a 64 crayon box. We don't, we're not expecting every teacher to use every, every crayon in their crayon box. But what we are doing is we're, we're curating a bunch of tools that are best in the, in, in the field. And we're building a professional development around those tools. And teachers are selecting the tools that are most appropriate for the instructional things that they're trying to accomplish with their students. And so for some teachers, 12 crayons are fine. For other teachers, they wanna dabble in all the crayons. That's fine, we'll support the teachers where they need to be supported. And that's, that's the strategy we've been deploying for the last over two hundred years, okay? And so, um, this last tool that we're just gonna show you from this toolbox, is a, is a, this one is EdPuzzle. And, and what you may have heard, you know, oftentimes, people talking about using video, like YouTube videos in the classroom, okay? Well, one of the problems with assigning a video to someone in the classroom for homework, is that you don't really know. You don't really know if they watched the video, so kids get a video to watch at home, assuming they have access, which for the most part we do. If a kid goes home and doesn't watch that video, then when the teacher comes in the morning, it's too late. They don't know that the kid, you know, you know that the kid didn't watch the video, right? So what EdPuzzle allows you to do is actually build into the, any video that's on YouTube, any linkable video. Actually point in the video what's gonna stop, and check for understanding, and the student's gonna have a, to respond to what they watched before they get to the next segment in the video. So if you take a step back, and you throw this into Google Classroom, and I assign this from the Google Classroom as an assignment. Now teachers will have a central place where they're assigning these, these activities. Students are doing them, and the data is coming back to the teacher in Google Classroom. So that it still know, uh, which student has had this, understanding on this part of the video. And so they can't just say, well, I watched it. You know, because they're gonna be, it's gonna be segmented, and you, the teacher gets to construct what the activities are as the video goes along, so if you want to show them.
Yeah, so just through, uh, these green question marks, that's where the video is segmented. That's where the teacher wants the student to make sure that they, uh, check in for understanding. And the prompts that you put in, they can accept, they're, they're dialog boxes, they're constructive responses, where students have to actually engage in dialogue. You could do a series of different, um, things, uh, in that text box. Here's a quick example. Cute little video. And there comes the prompt, now you have to engage in conversation, and the teacher gets immediate feedback. Um, real simple, just put there, how do you think the red box is buying the field nights for their three feet of this stuff? So, you know, now students have to go in, and they'll communicate back and forth to each other. Alright, so that there are some of the, um, structural software, is that teachers use for assessments. Um, the most important part of this though, to make sure it's being implemented properly, is professional modeling. You wanna talk about the SAMR model?
Sure, so, um, when Ed's out in the field working with teachers, and also when we're working with, uh, the cohorts of new teachers. One of the, one of the main points we're trying to get people to understand, and, and the, the, the teachers in the district are really, that we're working with, are really getting a good handle on this. Is that there, this, this thing called a SAMR model, and basically just a way to try and think about how instructional technology is, is used in a classroom. Um, so at its, at its, at its very simplest level, if you take an activity and you use technology, um, at a, at a simple level, such as instead of writing a, a, a report, kids are gonna edit the report, that's substitution, so it's a, it's a very simple level. Um, on the other hand, uh, if I go down, if I go down the, the model, and I go to, uh, a redefinition. That same story that a kid might be writing, they're gonna go on the internet and then share that, that, that article that they wrote, or that story, with an author. And the author will give them feedback, and, and the author will, will then connect it to the classroom. I mean, that now is a redefinition of the actual activity that we just talked about a second ago. So what we really wanted to do is get to more higher level activities. Um, but again, just like with the 64 crayons, you're not always, and not every activity is gonna be at this level. And what we're trying to explain to teachers is that you have to find the space that, that makes the most sense, given what you're trying to accomplish in the classroom. Um, so a SAMR model is just one way to, to just look at your activities and think about it more deeply. Um, and, and again, it really goes back to like the understanding about design model, which you're starting, you're starting with what you want to accomplish first. And then working backwards to, to, to figure out what the instructional activities will be, okay? And then what those assessments are. So this, this ties into the larger instructional, um, initiatives that are happening in the district.
Uh, so the PD has come through various different avenues. Um, direct embedded classroom support, so Darren and Ed are in the buildings, in classrooms, collaborating with teachers. Um, Ed has been providing a lot of professional development at the secondary, so middle school and high school. Um, he's meeting with the teacher teams, Dr. Candy talked about the, um, re-managing of the middle school. So he's in the team meetings, working with the teams as they are, uh, collaborating together. He's then working with teachers in the classroom to show them how this software is utilized. He's doing lunch plans at the high school, um, as well as Darren. So they're, they're working collaboratively, modeling, um, and providing embedded professional development. Darren and Ed have also provided after-school professional development for staff members. Um, going over various different topics, such as using assessment tools, what I just showed you. Um, classroom organization, student engagements, et cetera. Um, and our new teachers to the district have to go through different levels of, uh, professional development. It's all at the school, they stay at the school month to month for about two hours. Uh, the year three cohort, um, so they have year one, year two, year three, the year three cohort is under Darren and Ed's, um, supervision. And they're basically going over, the whole topic is instructional technology. Um, and that brings us to the conclusion of our, uh, presentation. Question mark up, move a little bit, I don't know why. Thank you very much for your time and for your participation. I suppose, oh, you gotta put your question into the Google Classroom.
This is great, I, I imagine that student engagement increases with the use of these, with the tools.
Yeah, so it's interesting you brought that up, because I was talking with Ed, quote Darren, I told him that recently, and he was at the middle school, and they were doing digital storytelling. And they were using a program, um, what's that program, Darren? Uh, Scrip? Which was, was it again? Digital storytelling one? It's like, or any one?
One of the, one of the.
It goes to the 64 crayon box, right? There's so many, um. The digital storytelling program that, it's like engages encoding as well storytelling. So you take these blocks, you put them together, and you can have characters create stories between them, you can change the images. And, um, he was in a particular classroom where there was low engagement, and there's one young man in general, who created hours and hours of a digital story, and that's all, he was so engaged, he went home, spent hours on it, because he was so. Yeah, yeah. Um, so, yeah, it is generating a tremendous amount of engagement. The important thing is to balance it out, you know, because they, they will get bored of this also, so there is a balance, which is why we have several different options to teach us.
So my next question there is, are, how are we measuring, um, the advancement or the academic progress from the use of these different tools?
Oh, well, all those teacher dashboards, we get a tremendous amount of usage reports, that's another great thing of this. So, um, you remember the first slide I showed you was the subscriptions? Uh, I can see all the usage reports, I was just at Brookside, I was with a teacher, we were going through, because the beginning of the year assessment was taken, now the beginning of the year, we're looking at the growth. We're looking at the, um, next steps. So all these programs will tell you growth and gap areas, so teachers know next steps. Um, so that could be a whole other presentation.
Yeah, so, a, a little over a year ago, with, with the Google Classroom, in particular, we had about ninety teachers that were starting to use it. And now we're at two hundred ninety teachers that are, that are self-registered to the Google Classroom. Some using it more than others. We, we have, um, at, on, on, on daily average, over two thousand people, uh, active in Google Classroom, and we have, um. Yeah, it was almost, almost, yeah, and then, uh, we have, uh, I think, I don't have the data, but, um. We also have like, if you look at the, the board data about files being shared within the Google stuff. Um, about a year ago, we had, we had, um, like two thousand documents, now we're up to, I think, seventeen, seventeen thousand documents shared. Um, so when you look at the, the, the activity, now to answer your question, I mean, you asked a question, you know, how do you know it's, it's having an impact on, on instruction? I, I can't tell you that, that, with that number, I can just tell you that from, from sheer usage implementation, um, data, we know it's having an impact on, on, on usage. People are using it, people are, 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 uh, there's about two hundred active classes in Google Classroom, as opposed to a year ago, we had about seven. Um, and so the data is showing that, that usage is, is increasing a lot.
Right, but so, I mean, you can use this thing, but then, like, is it worth, you know, how do we determine?
So the Google Classroom is, is free, it's not a charged, uh.
No, the, the only way you're ever gonna know that is in a research study where you're isolating that as the only, the only factor that's, that's not cheating. So we're not gonna know that, but what, I, I, an example that you can use is Team Order, right? So these are kids that if you ask them to do those news stories and write them, you would not get the same kind of result as the kids that are using the cameras and the, and the computer and posting it, and, you know, it's.
I think every tool, just to speak on two of them, because I'm, well, several of them I'm familiar with in my household. For instance, to your point, where the child started in the beginning, for instance, RASD kids, because there's a lot of reading happening. There is an assessment that happens with that parent, teacher, and organization, you see the child at another level, and RASD is a, to go from one level to another. So I see that already. For Google Classroom, the teacher utilizes as a way for her to edit, um, my daughter's work. So she'll do her essay, her persuasive, persuasive essay, but now the teacher has a tracking method to see where the essay started and what the final product is, so that's another example. And iReady is just a competition in my house, who's gonna get credit back? It's like, it's part of homework every single day, so, and there's three of them, so they need to check to spend an hour. So they put the timer on, spend an hour to do and get work done. So I'm seeing it in the household, and it's excitement, it's just a different way of learning. So you're in the classroom, learning one way, but you get to come home and you're not gonna do it. So I'm seeing the change.
Right, and all those, and all those, as Chris said, they, they're dashboards, that measure the growth, a lot of growth. Right, but the teacher gets it, the parent gets some of them, and then just Google Classroom.
Depending upon the software. So you're gonna see that in iReady, but you're not gonna see that in Google Classroom.
I'm also guessing that the level of sophistication is not measured in standardized assessments. You know, what I'm saying, like, the assessments, the standard assessments from the state are not, have not caught up with the kind of learning.
Oh, depends again on the software, uh, because iReady, iXL, there are, um, content maps that are linked to the state standards. So we know if students are getting certain persons wrong, what standards the definition is, so I'll know this measurement data. You know, it's, um, kindergarten, student, they're not able to add, you know, second grade actually right now, but it's gonna change, adding money. Alright, so yes, so some of these programs are linked to, uh, the standards I've included.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I see Elisa doing, you know, she's doing both, which is cool. Because I don't think, you know, I, I like to say, I don't want the baby to be thrown out the back, but I think there's still some, um, benefit in actually doing old, old-fashioned, paper pencil activities, but, right? But there, but she's doing that, and then she'll come home, and I'm like, what are you doing? Are you on your phone? She's like, I'm doing my homework, I'm like, okay, like, but, you know, so it's, it's great.
Great presentation.
I just, yeah, I, one other impression I had, and this is the, sort of the lawyer popping out, is, is the data privacy. Like, are these all well-paid companies that have solid?
They're all well-paid, but you know that the state is piloting online testing, and they already have reached, thankfully, we were not one of the districts that would reach. But there's, there's no personal information out here either, so, um, we're, we're actually really careful.
Yeah, we subscribe to service embosses, which basically what it does is, they, they, they screen all the, the company, almost all these products and products that we buy into embosses. Um, so that's one thing, but the other part is that they make them have a legal language that meets this New York State 2D legislation. And if they, if they don't, then, then they, they have to meet the spirit of legislation and work towards it. So every single one of these companies either has met the 2D legislation spirit of the law, or is under the process of, of meeting it. So, um, to answer your question, the answers are pretty well protected in that regard.
And these are through NACs or what?
Yeah, NACs, almost, almost all of them that we pay, if anything we pay for, is pretty much through NACs. Yeah, so, so if we, we like, if we like a tool that isn't, we just make a phone call, and we get two of the districts that, that, that will all be using it, and then we.
And then they'll do the NACs, yeah.
Very impressive, yeah, that is great.
That is great.
Thank you.
We're now to rest.
Thank you.
Yes, it's...
It was not before, yeah.
Oh, the goal, oh, the goal, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, comments and reports from the Board of Education. Share.
So I, I don't really have much to share, other than last night, um, we've been doing a lot of Founder's Days, but, um, in addition to the Founder's Day, last night was the girls' last home game, the girls' basketball home game. And it was quite emotional because, uh, Asia Hudson and Jenna Anacario. Sorry, Jenna, all right? They've been on Barca for six years, they are leaving. So, much to our dismay, but probably to the, um, thrill of other competing teams, because, um, they've given us that's what it was. Very emotional, Coach Calapano is just an amazing coach, he has an amazing team, and it was just, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what they're going to do in the playoffs.
I have, I have two things. We have been going to Founder's Day dinners, uh, this week and next week. For anybody who doesn't know, this is an event put on at each different school for its PTA members, invited guests, and awards are given, honorary money, every, every year at Founder's Day at, at every one of these dinners. And so, for everyone that we attend, we get to sit and listen to colleagues, as well as other parents, give testimonials about these award winners that are just so incredible, and it's so uplifting. It, you know, just really makes you realize, in case you've had a bad day and, and maybe you aren't seeing it, the absolute best in humanity. Um, the first of February, last Thursday, I attended the talent show at the high school. And again, for anybody who has not ever gone to that, you see it on the calendar if you get a chance, go. There were approximately thirty acts, and one just more amazing than the next. I mean, we really could just rival American Idol any day of the week, no joke. I mean, these kids are just incredible. And what was also so amazing about that night is no matter who came out, because of course, you know, some of the acts might be attacked stronger than others, it didn't matter, the audience was filled with ninety percent students. And regardless of what the act was, these kids whistled and screamed and clapped, gave standing ovations to every act. And, you know, come on, we all remember high school, what an amazing thing, right? To have your peers give you that kind of support. So it was a beautiful evening, I was so proud to attend.
Yes, um, I am the liaison to the Health and Safety Committee, so we had a meeting. And we talked about, we, a review of the, uh, internal pest, the pest management, uh, procedures. Uh, there were discussions about preparations, uh, for response to the flu, uh, problems. Uh, so far, we have not had a terribly serious, uh, impact, but they were reviewing all of their, uh, plans. And, um, I have to say, I, I guess in the overall, that I'm always pleased when the things that are being covered are, in my mind, relatively minor day-to-day operational issues. There was nothing that rose to a level that I would have said was very much concerning. And it just is a good indicator of how much top of things, uh, our facilities people are. And this is, we have representatives of the teachers, representatives of the nurses, um, everybody working together. It's a, it really is a very effective committee. But I just have to say that, that when the things that we were dealing with were day-to-day things that are being managed, that was impressive. Um, I have attended a number of things in the last month. I was at the Long Island Association Breakfast, uh, at Crest Hollow, which, uh, featured as speakers our new county executive, Laura Curran, uh, the county executive from Suffolk, Steve Bollone, and John Flanagan, who is, uh, State Senator. I also attended the, um, I don't know what else I wanted to, to tell you about. Uh, on Friday, there is going to be a financial forum hosted by the Nassau County Council of School Superintendents, uh, the PTAs, um, and NICE it. And, uh, I advise anyone who wants to go and hear the latest about, uh, financial issues that we should be advocating for, please join us. It's on Friday morning from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty, uh, at Salisbury. Salisbury, uh, school, yeah, it's, yeah. Um, I was very pleased to attend the Martin Luther King Junior, uh, program, the evening program and the poster contest. And, uh, certainly a shout-out to the concerned parents of all of them who initiated these programs and have, have shepherded them all of these years. And it was really wonderful participation across the district, and, uh, just a, a really feel-good evening. That's most of, and then this past, uh, Saturday, I attended a legislative breakfast in Longwood. Uh, they have a very large legislative breakfast, and they do get a very turn, a good turnout of, uh, elected officials. So there were presentations on changing demographics of Long Island, the increased poverty level, and, uh, various other things that are impacting costs. Uh, there was, uh, a panel of the local legislators, and they had students there that were able to ask questions. So it was a very informative conference, so that's it.
I'm just going to say the Martin Luther King, um, same thing as Sue was talking about in terms of the students being supportive. You saw, it was wonderful because you have the elementary students performing there as well. And it was just wonderful to see the students, the high school students supporting, um, all of the students at the lower level. And I mean, the whole district get a national award as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody's doing paperwork on the school district, but, yeah.
No, it was great.
So I, I mean, we've been at, about, so I've been at a number of the same events, um, that my colleagues have been at, um, but a few of us were also at Hofstra. Uh, their basketball team to watch our, members of our concert choir, because other of us were in the town show, in Tucson. Um, and our pet band performed, uh, at Hofstra for the, um, the men's basketball game, and that was great. It's a great turnout, it was a great reception, we had our pet band, and then Hofstra has a pet band, uh, and they were kind of going back and forth, so it was nice. What else? I, I watched a webinar that, um, New York State School Board's been on analyzing the governor's budget, the proposed budget. Um, and so, it was, it was interesting, it was also a little frightening at the same time, some of the things that the governor had proposed. Some of which was putting caps on increases in, um, some of our expense-based aids, um, which is kind of nuts. Particularly, they're talking about building caps, and what they mentioned, and I don't know the impact here, but, um, tapping the growth at two percent statewide, which they mentioned in the webinar, growth statewide is over more than two percent, um, in building aids, so that would, um, take money away from districts. They also, they talked about, um, I guess, you know, summer special education, which we get reimbursed at eighty percent rate. We talked about the reimbursement rate being at the excess, the high-cost paid ratio rate, which is generally, I'm not even sure of ours, but I think also...